Council meeting for Monday, June 24th, 2019. Please rise as you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Councilmember Piana?
Here.
Leaks May?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Mayor Protem Pollica?
Here.
And Mayor Coulter?
Here, thank you. We have a quorum this evening. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda. What is council's pleasure on the agenda this evening?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Leaks May. Any discussion on the agenda? Barb, would you call the roll?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pollica?
Yes.
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The agenda is approved. So moving on now, the next item of business on our agenda is presentations, and we have three presentations this evening. The first one is the Artist in You presentation by our Chamber of Commerce. And I see a couple of folks from the chamber here. Joy Dale, are you guys introducing this item? Awesome.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name's Dale Villarolo. I think a lot of you know me. I'm the Chair of the Ferndale Area Chamber of Commerce. Hello to the mayor and city council.
Good evening, Dale.
Each year, the chamber, in collaboration with Ferndale schools, we celebrate and highlight the art of our students. We're here tonight to recognize the three premier artists in our schools with some nice little awards.
Excellent.
So at that, I'd like to get Emmett Zabor, Jamanda Taylor, and Ann Kenny to all come up here. Hopefully you're all here.
Yeah. Excellent.
Okay, that's all right. I'll spend it. Emmett, first place goes to Emmett Zabor, who I've known since he was like this big.
But that didn't influence anything, right?
Pardon me?
But that didn't influence it.
I can't say. I'm not at liberty.
Ah.
I'm sorry. We could talk after. And Jamanda is not here, I don't believe. Right, Kim? And Ann Kenny is our third-place winner. Congratulations.
Yeah.
This is a very important event that we have each year. Being a budding artist myself many, 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 many years ago, I truly appreciate the involvement and the kids, and I just think it's a really nice community thing that we do for these guys. So, thank you guys for participating.
Can you have them just maybe briefly share what it is that you created, what medium you used, and that sort of, and maybe your grade and that kind of stuff? Let us know who you are.
All right, well, I'm Emmett. I go to Ferndale High School as well as Casa for my, well, for Casa is where I do the art. The piece I made was just a snail with a bunch of stuff you'd find in like a town like ours on its back, like stop signs and trees and rocks and all that, all that sort of stuff. There's no real message or theme behind it. I just sort of draw what I want, and I guess it worked out.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it was an ink pen drawing, completely ink.
Wow.
Which takes a lot of time and a lot of talent.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you.
Good, congratulations. And why don't you tell us just a little bit about who you are and what you made?
Um, my name's Ann Kenny. I paint flowers mainly. But for this, I painted a girl with waves shooting out of her head. So, um, I don't know, that's just the idea I came up with.
Awesome. Where do you go to school?
Claussen High School.
Claussen High School, awesome.
It's the waves that came out of her head. She painted. But it was, all the artwork is beautiful.
Yeah.
And I encourage everybody next year to go. It's a really nice show. It's a nice evening, well spent. So once again, you guys, thank you very much. And thank you to all the volunteers and Marie that does the voting and all that good stuff. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thanks for putting that on. Thanks for being there. Our next presentation is the presentation of the June Beautification Awards. And we have the Beautification Committee leadership here this evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Excellent.
My name's Robin Yelverton, and I am the Chair of the Beautification Commission here in Ferndale. And it is the first of the awards for this year. For those of you who may not be familiar with the process, we go on nominations. So it really depends on who gets nominated as who wins the awards. So if you will like and follow our Facebook page, you can always nominate homes in your neighborhoods from there. Or you also can get forms through the City Hall here and nominate someone. You can even nominate yourself. It doesn't have to be a neighbor. All we ask is that it be a beautiful yard here in Ferndale. So, the first award is in the northeast quadrant. It is 2245 on Orchard. And this little house was built back in 1920. It's a very small little house that sits back off the road. In fact, it almost doesn't really even have a backyard, which for us made it great because all we can really evaluate is the front yards because we don't want to be trespassing. So it has a lovely little front yard with a gate to walk through and a courtyard. And I believe the owners are here, Adam and Rachel Stone Shizler. Would you like to step up?
Ah.
So would you like to tell us a little bit about the house? How long you been there?
Sure. Yeah, um, maybe I need this microphone. We've been in Ferndale six years at this point, and like you mentioned, we have one of those setback houses. So take advantage of the front yard. We need to do something with it.
Sure.
When we moved in, it was nothing but grass, and we've been plugging away at it. So it's special that somebody recognized us. I don't know who nominated us. I didn't know. We were nominated until yesterday.
Oh, wow.
Had we known, we might have like taken the trash bag.
Well, it was garbage pick-up day.
Yeah.
It's actually, it's, garbage bags full of seedum. So like, it's actually more landscaping projects.
Well, awesome.
It's an older house. I'm curious, though, are you, are you handy? Because it's an older house. Is there a lot of upkeep?
Yeah, I am, yeah. Handy, handy for sure. I got my degree in landscape architecture. So like, that's, that's my thing.
You want to join the commission?
I've, I thought about it.
Could use a land.
We're taking ownership right now.
Awesome. Well, here, we would like to present this award to you, and on behalf of the Beautification Commission.
That's great.
Awesome. Thanks so much.
Awesome.
The next house, we go from a very small, little modest cottage to a lovely home on northwest quadrant at 454 West Oak Ridge. This house was built back in 1927, three-bedroom, lovely home. We just thought it was quite beautiful in its simplicity, its clean elegance. The, it's obviously maintained very well. The owner is Elise Austin. Is Elise here? I'm sorry?
Is that, is that you?
Oh, yeah. I forgot, duh. Come on over. My, my trusty assistant over here, who's trying to get me to read lips, and I don't do this so well.
Shh.
The, we, she's also one of the ones who took advantage of the tree program here in Ferndale. And I noticed that there's still some brochures out on the table about the late spring planting of trees. So if you are in need of trees for that area between the lawn and the sidewalk and street, take advantage of that. So, Elise, how long have you been there?
Um, we've lived in the house almost four years, this September.
Wonderful.
So we've done extensive work inside, and we really wanted to keep the integrity of not only the neighborhood, but the house itself on the outside. So we've put down new sod, and obviously we did take advantage of the tree program, which I think was a great addition. We lost two trees, the house lost two trees before we moved in, so we really wanted to plant new ones going forward.
Awesome. Well, congratulations.
Beautiful.
Congratulations.
The next house is just quite lovely. Who's, I'm sorry. Southeast winner. This one is at 210 Spencer. And it just looks so cute and comfy, cozy cottage. We love the fact that the blue chairs tied in with the lovely gray-blue hostas across the front of the house. Just a great balance of color and form. So if Kate Reynolds is here, is Kate here?
Hi.
It will be five years this August.
Wonderful. And how much of this did you do yourself, or did you inherit a beautiful home?
I inherited quite a bit. The owner before me, really, she totally encompassed everything. She did the cedar shake and the siding, and also the hydrangeas and the Japanese maple. But everything else you see, the border, the rocks, the hostas, which are my fave, and that beautiful tree, which is a flamingo dapple willow that actually blooms pink when it comes in, which is great. When I planted it, it looked like a little cake pop. It was, we put it in the back of my mom's escape and drove it home and planted it ourselves.
Wow.
And on the side is a beautiful lily garden. And I did inherit quite a bit, which I'm very thankful that I inherited a home from a woman who loved Ferndale as much as I did.
Awesome.
So if I can do anything to add to that, the better.
Awesome. Very cool. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
The next winner is one that is owned by someone that some of you may be familiar with. This is in the southwest quadrant at 430 St. Louis. And if Brian and Rachel Anne Engler, Engel are here, are you here?
Hey, come on over.
We also sort of created a very, you know, honorary degree for this particular house. We, we said it was the most crunchy, greenest, and off-the-grid house in Ferndale. And so we absolutely love what they are doing, turning this into an urban farm. And I would love to have Rachel and Brian tell us just a little bit about it.
Hi.
Hi.
So first of all, it's very cool that Ferndale even allows this. We had guests come in today, and they said, you probably get written up a lot. I was like, actually, we just got an award. And it is a permaculture homestead. The beginning, it might look kind of wild, but it's actually a rain garden, and there's a trench dug in with organic material to help prevent flooding. Because we don't want to flood Detroit. We don't want to flood our streets and act as a demonstration of what's possible. The front yard is taking care of our, our feather friends and our pollinator friends. And there's actually lots of medicinals and roses that we make a damask jam out of. And we've sold out of it at the farmer's market. It is a solar-powered house. And we're very grateful to the DPW that they provided the compost and the wood chips, because it was literally 100% grass two years ago. And we used our kitchen scraps, and then we layered it with cardboard, and then two inches of Ferndale compost and seeds scattered. And it's, it's quite lovely. So anyone can come visit, and I'm happy to share seeds or share information on how to do a native or a, you know, pollinator-friendly landscape.
Awesome. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah. And finally, this particular winner is our commercial winner. And we just wanted to reach out to the Elks here in Ferndale. That's Lodge number 1588. It was established, let's see, back in 1931. And we are extending an award to them for embracing the whole community for their decorative efforts during Pride Month this June. And just on a personal note, Jerome and I just received a one-year honorary membership from the Silent Auction at the Art of the Cocktail. So...
Hang on.
So if we have someone here representing the Elks... We're mooses in Holly and Elks in Ferndale. So anything you want to share with us about what the Elks have going on?
Hello, and good evening. Thank you so much for this amazing award and recognizing our efforts to beautify our slice of Ferndale. We've been trying to re-establish our lodge for a couple of years now, and it is very breathtaking and very rewarding to hear the, you know, to be here and accept this award. And we're going to pledge to continue our effort to better our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And finally, we just wanted to give a shout-out to this couple. I don't know if you know Lauren and Larry. I haven't personally met them yet. But not one, but two of our commission members ran into them the same afternoon out on their walk. This is just a, you know, a stroll in Ferndale. And while doing it, they were picking up trash and garbage along their way. This is awesome. We think everyone should take a walk for health.
And help pick up the trash for health.
And thank you to Lauren and Larry for helping keep Ferndale beautiful. And finally, if you are interested in nominating anyone, just know that people who were nominated for the June awards that maybe didn't win this time, their nominations are carried over into July. However, we would love to have additional nominations, which are due by July 16th. Like us and follow us on Facebook and Instagram. And until next month, I bid you adieu.
Thank you. Thank you, Robin. Great job, as always. Our third presentation is Main Street Oakland. And I see Jonathan from Oakland County and Cindy, our DDA person and our DDA chair, who's doing the honors tonight. Jonathan?
Good evening. Hey, before any of your beautification winners leave, I'd like to send them to my house in Indiana. It was built in 1859. I bought it to keep it from being a parking lot, and I just haven't gotten to the outside yet. So please come. It needs all the help it can get. My purpose tonight, tonight, is to be with you to recognize the Ferndale DDA. Every year, the Main Street Oakland County Program does annual evaluations for accreditation to our select level communities, which one of them is Ferndale. And please report, you passed with flying colors again, which basically means that the Ferndale DDA are doing all the right things and continuing to move the district in a positive direction by the National Main Street Center standards. So tonight, we're dividing and conquering among the staff because Royal Oak is getting their accreditation right now. Ortonville is getting their accreditation in the northern part of the county. So congratulations to Ferndale. And we'd like to invite members of the DDA and business community to join council to take a photo as we present the accreditation for Ferndale. So congratulations. You're one of 12 communities in Oakland County accredited this year.
Yeah.
I want you in the photo.
All right, good.
Tori's going to take the picture, which totally blew my plan because I don't like to be in pictures, so.
Wow. Hopefully everything on the agenda is that fun. Let's see, our next item of business, then that concludes the presentations, next item of business is called Audience. So that's your opportunity, if you're here with us in the audience, to address council on any issue that's not on the agenda, because you can speak to that issue when we get to that part of the agenda. But if you'd like to address council, come on up, give us your name, your address, and three minutes is yours. Good evening, sir.
It's me again. Quick few things to the death and destruction incorporated, or whatever the DDA stands for. We'll talk after. I have grievances with this. Anyway, quick few things. I've noticed you guys jack up the rent, increase of living here, but where's the jobs? Nobody in Ferndale's hiring. You got empty buildings. It's been vacant for a year, two years. The AT&T place down the street, towards that way, that's still vacant. I'm not understanding. I am starting to think we need a new mayor. We need a new council, because as it is, not only is now our sidewalks getting destroyed, I've gone through two, two, three streets just on my way home that have sidewalk closed in a hole in the middle of it. It's bad enough that we got these restaurants that have these gates that take up 80, 90% of the sidewalk. And mayor, I showed you pictures. You know what I'm talking about. An update on that, I was riding home from Myers, and about five feet close enough for me to, for the person to hear me say, excuse me, they just turned around. There was nowhere for me to turn, because you got the pedestrian here, you got the light posts, post here, you got one of the businesses having their gate here. I ultimately... I ultimately smashed my back into one of the posts, you know, where the restaurant owners have their barricades, because I had nowhere to maneuver. And I told you, all of you, about this my first standing. I'm starting to think we need a new mayor and everybody else up there, because, you know, nothing's been done. You got bars where you got alcoholics. So one more quick thing. We need more bike things in Ferndale to lock our bikes up. Me and another couple showed up and unfortunately, I took the last space and they said, we need more, you know, those bike things. So I'm like, talk to the council. So again, I don't know what you guys are doing. You guys are hiking up prices, rent, everything else, and no jobs. Let's get it together. Now you know why so many people leave Ferndale and why businesses are going.
Thank you. Good evening.
Evelyn Mostert, West Drayton. Just as a side note, when I grew up, Machiavelli was considered amoral and deplorable. Now he's being touted as some sort of hero when we divide and conquer and ends justify the means. I gotta take issue with that. Anyhow, secondly, it seems as though Justin Lyons is now the webmaster for the city. All communications with the city via email are being directed through Justin. I get responses from Justin or Jordan. And they are the ones pushing this Granicus thing, which I believe is an inferior product. And granted, okay, it's on the consent agenda, I'll speak to that later. But as far as the website goes, it's almost like the Wizard of Oz pay no attention to the man behind the curtain. Because now, anything prior to February of this year, May of this year, actually, no meetings, no minutes, no links. And my question is, have Justin and Jordan been delegated all this authority? Or have they usurped it? And regardless of the answer to that question, I thought you were the governing body here, not these two, not Justin Lyons and Jordan Toardi. I thought you were the governing body. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Becky Hammond. I live on West Drayton. I wanted to follow up on something I brought up last time, which seemed kind of left up in the air. We couldn't answer a question about it. And that was the idea that my neighborhood group has that there were discussed changes to the master plan for automatic rezoning of churches and schools. It was thought that we got this maybe off social media. It was a rumor mill or something. But what we found on the city website was a long document that looked at first like it was done by the Planning Commission dated, I think, February 6th of this year. And so if you go to page 19 of that, this is where we got this concern. So it says, PUD, Planned Urban Development, right? That's what that stands for?
Yes.
For school and church sites, adaptive reuse challenges under current ordinance. It says, even with revisions to R3 and mixed, that doesn't account for PUDs for school and church sites currently zoned R1. Then it encourages lifting 80% R1 requirement currently in PUD requirements to align with master plan vision for redevelopment. They add as a kind of a remark, practically, it will be very challenging to redevelop schools and churches into single family, especially if preserving the existing building. So what they're talking about, and I know you guys all know this, in the ordinances, it says, where the underlying zoning is R1 or R2, a minimum of 80% of the dwellings shall be detached, single-family dwellings, and up to 20% may be attached, single-family or multiple-family dwellings. So this is where we got this concern, not listening to rumors from each other or not on the social media. We found this on an actual city document. I've looked at this document a couple of times. And when I was looking at it today, on each of the 27 pages, there's a name and block letters off to the side, Smith Group. And so for several readings of this, I thought I was reading something that the Planning Commission themselves had written. But Smith Group, according to Google, is an American architectural engineering and planning firm, a big one, 1,300 employees, based in Detroit. So this document is actually from the kind of firm that wants pieces of Ferndale. It's not from the Planning Commission, from what I can tell. And Smith Group sounded familiar to me. And I noticed that they're a paid sponsor of this kind of ad that looks like an article in Crane's Business, talking about redevelopment-ready cities, of which Ferndale is one. So this is where we got this concern, and we still have this concern. This does look like the city is considering automatic rezoning of any church or school. And obviously, this is happening. The city charter says that the city, this is probably in all city charters, that there's kind of subservient to the state constitution. And the state constitution says, all political power is inherent in the people. Government is instituted for the equal benefit, security, and protection. And I personally consider zoning laws to be the utmost in security and protection for the people. I also think that if there was any.
Sir, she has the floor, sir. Thank you. For another 30 seconds.
Well, I just want to end by saying that what I would object to is if there's any change, like this proposed, it sounds like encouraging lifting this R1 requirement. The people also, under the constitution, have the right peacefully to assemble, to consult for the common good, to instruct their representatives, and to petition the government for redress of grievances. If there's planned, if there's consideration of rezoning, to me, that would be a grievance by most of us. We don't want our neighborhoods rezoned. So we would want to be able to approach you for redress of this grievance and not have anything be automatic. I'd also like to see the Planning Commission be this volunteer citizen organization and not use something like Smith Group, not use their opinion. I'd like to see our Planning Commission come up with documents like this, and not have them written by a professional organization. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tim Labuda. I live at 1407 West Marshall, at the corner of Central and Marshall, near the high school. And on Father's Day, around 3 o'clock, I had the unfortunate experience of having a car drive into my house. Which was not how I wanted to spend my Father's Day. I just wanted to come here and ask the council tonight, is there any way to have a traffic study done on Central Avenue to the high school? Because it is literally a drag race and a race trip up and down all hours of the day. I cannot even sit on my porch to listen to music or anything, because there's so much traffic cutting through from Detroit and the other south neighborhoods, that people are just driving up and down, ignoring the stop sign, blowing through full speed. And there's a lot of kids, there's a lot of children, and people walking dogs at night. And luckily for me, the house stopped the car. But the gas company said, since the meter was taken off the wall, that if there was a spark, my house would have exploded. And really, I don't think it's really right that we have this free travel area, and people are using this as a shortcut, to get through Ferndale and not stopping to use anything in Ferndale. There's Pine Crest and there's Republic on either side. And the reason people are cutting through is because of, there's no stoplight on Central. So if we had the street blocked off or something gone down that I know the access to the school is there, but maybe we could route traffic south of the yard and have a one-way street or something to make it more accessible and better control of the traffic in general. So my first time ever here, I hope it's the last.
Well, welcome. I'm sorry it's under these circumstances. And I'm glad that you're okay, first and foremost. And in regards to your questions, I guess I would just ask, could you share your information with our city manager? And we can look into whether it's a traffic study or if there's something else that we need to do to look at that. He can guide you, if you don't mind sharing your contact information with our city manager.
Should I do it now or later? I don't know. I've never done this before. Okay.
You could give it to Karen.
And also, finally, I just want to thank the fire and the police department, because literally, within three minutes, people were on the scene. And we kept everything, everyone was safe, no one got hurt. But at the same time, I really don't want to experience this again.
Yep. I appreciate it.
If I made it to the chair, I was just, I'm your neighbor on West Hazelhurst. Yeah, the police and fire response was outstanding.
Yeah.
Including chasing the driver down.
Yeah, exactly. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, how are you?
Good.
I'm Tim Van Dusen. I'm here with my wife, Jane. We live at 594 Withington. And the reason I'm here is we got a notice in the mail a couple of weeks ago about sidewalk repair. I know it's an item on your agenda.
It is.
We have no problem. We had one, it's got a hairline crack, it's not raised, doesn't create an issue, but it will at some point. And I get it that you're doing it all at once and it makes sense to do it. But what I have a problem with is that we have two curb cuts, crossing Evernoy and crossing Withington. And the concrete is really badly degraded there, and it has been for a while. People try to push strollers and have difficulty getting through. And it just seems to me the priority's a little out of whack. I mean, a sidewalk slab that poses no impediment to pedestrian traffic versus something that clearly does. And I know my wife called somebody and said, well, we're slated for 2021. And I don't get that. If you've got somebody out there doing cement, I don't know why they're not fixing what needs to be fixed. And this is cement. This isn't repaving the street. This is the ribbon of concrete that goes around the curb. And so that's our issue. It's a heavy pedestrian traffic area. And it just seems to me it would make sense from an economic standpoint. You already have people out there. I realize we're paying for the slab. This is a different part. This is slightly outside the curb. But it seemed to me it would make sense for things to be done at the same time.
So can I ask you, Carlos, can I just ask you guys to connect? And Carlos is our director of DPW.
Thank you.
And he can either go out and take a look at it or work with you.
We have some pictures and I appreciate it.
Yeah, we'll see if we can figure out some way we can.
Appreciate your attention. We've lived here six years, we'd love it.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Glad to hear that. Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Lincoln. I'm here with my girlfriend, Elodie. We're a young couple, just moved in the neighborhood, 2239 Browning. And I just wanted to come up and say, I've had three interactions with the fire department and police and everybody involved in the city's been incredibly helpful. I think you guys are doing a heck of a job. We've got no gripes with anything.
Wow.
That's about it.
We don't get a lot of people like you. So. Where did you move from?
I'm originally from Howell. I moved from East Lansing, and she's from Rochester Hills area.
Oh. Well, thank you. Thank you for coming and introducing yourself and welcome to Ferndale.
This is the first time here, we've never been to anything like this. We're, you know, like I said, new homeowners and haven't ever done a city council.
Yeah, that's awesome. Thanks.
Yay.
Thanks for coming out.
Thanks for coming.
Appreciate it. Good evening.
My name is Sally Sawyers. I live on Jewel Street, over there by Suburban Ford. The traffic there on Saturday is so full. There is cars from Woodward down to Hilton, Hilton down to Woodward. You have to actually stop there at the end and wait for the car to come from Hilton so you can get down the street. The traffic on that street is terrible. And Suburban said that they would let us know what their plans were, but we haven't heard nothing. And I know you guys, real estate, those houses there on the corner, I really do think you guys should really think about letting them tear those houses down, because nobody lives in there. And who knows what is growing inside those houses? And it could be a hazard for the neighborhood. And another thing is, you need to put some kind of safety crosswalk on Hilton, down there by the State Fair Market. You know, they got those signs up for crossing, but people don't care. They need to, you need to put some kind of those lights up, so people can push the lights, you know, so they flash so you can cross the street. And Hilton is like a drag strip too, because there's no red light to stop them anymore. So people just travel from Nine Mile all the way down to Eight Mile, like there is no nothing. So I would really like to see some kind of safety lights up there. And I hope we can do something about Suburban Ford, please. It's a hazard.
Yep. Appreciate you coming out and sharing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Sharon?
Hi, I'm Sharon Chess. And I'm here representing the Ferndale Community Concert Band. I want to thank everybody in our community. This was our most successful year. We just completed our fourth season. We achieved and went beyond all of our goals for this season. We have been sought out by other musical organizations as to how we've been this successful in such a short period of time. They want me to serve on their boards, and it's like, no way. Ain't happening. But it's because of our musicians volunteering their time on a weekly basis and practicing their music, that they can perform to the ability that they do. It's thank you to the audience members that come to every single concert and contribute and applaud our efforts and our success. And it's because of the community supporting us and all of you. Whether you attend or don't, you still support us. And just acknowledging our existence. And we greatly appreciate everything that the citizens have done in their attendance and that you have done in your support. And thank you very much. Our next concert will be in October, and I look forward to performing for all of you.
Excellent. Thank you, Sharon. It was a great concert, Sharon.
It was.
Good evening.
Oh, Dennis August and 1550 Spencer. I got a couple of things here. One is, who has a right of way when it comes to traffic and bikes? On a green light, does the cars and then the bikes have to stop? If you're at an intersection? Or do the bikes, people on bikes keep having to roll right on through?
In general, bikes need to obey the rules.
They're supposed to obey, okay. I'm not seeing a whole lot of that. And I'm riding my bike and that. I mean, I ride around Ferndale and that. I'm just not seeing a whole lot of that. I'm seeing a lot of where the bikers are, you know, people on bikes, not just kids, adults, riding bikes and they're not buying, obeying those stop signs and traffic signals. And I know someone who just got hit by a car, but wasn't in the city. And then, and two, you being a former county commissioner, Mayor, a lot of traffic signals have disappeared, and I complained about that. I've got one over there by the, I can't think of the name of the bar there on Farrow and Nine Mile there. Got a big tree that blocks the view of traffic on Nine Mile. But that traffic signal, that stoplight was taken out there. And you can't see the traffic from one way. When I called Oakland County, apparently, those guys don't have, the road commission guys don't have to come to your meetings at night. And nobody knew who was responsible for taking down our traffic signals at Jarvis, at Farrow and Nine Mile, and various other places around town. And that, and like I said, you used to be on the county commission. Maybe you could shed a little light on that.
I can, and that is that those are not county roads, so they would not be under the jurisdiction of the county road commission. So those are local roads that Ferndale manages. And our police department has been working over the course of the last year or so, I'm looking at the chief, to evaluate the lights in town, because some of them have been there a long time, and the traffic volume does, no longer warrants an actual light. And so I don't know if that was one of the locations or not. I see the chief nodding his head. But we've been doing traffic counts, so there's been a thought process behind this, although you can share your. this, although you can share your concerns with the chief. It's been our police department that has overseen this, but we have been evaluating the, the traffic lights based on the, on the volume.
Yeah, and Jarvis has picked up since they put the bar in there. I got no complaints with the bar, but.
Good to know.
You know, but since, since that bar has been put in there, you know, and B Nectars and that, and then plus they bring in the food trucks in there from time to time, usually every week. And that, it does back the traffic up on that corner again. And we used to have a traffic signal there. Now that's closer to my neighborhood in my, where I live. And that, and when I'm riding my bike, now obviously we stay off to one side or the other on, on Wanda. But it's a little crazy there with some of the traffic coming out of there now. And that, but right where Bob's machinery used to be there on Nine Mile, if you look at that tree there, it blocks the view. And it makes it hard to get out there on the Nine Mile.
Thank you. Thanks, Dennis. Good to see you. Good evening.
Good evening, council. Good evening, Ferndale. My name is Mike Flores and I work in the private sector. In addition to working in the private sector, I am the president of the Board of Affirmations. So as you may have known, affirmations went through some challenging moments at the last quarter of last year, but in the first and second quarter of this year, we have come out triumphant. In fact, we've been able to host the governor twice now at, at, at affirmations along with Senator Moss and other politicos. And we are excited and really looking forward to being able to host other politicos at affirmations. In addition to being on the board, I am a resident here in Ferndale. I live at 703 Withington. And I do just want to share and express how my interaction with the city has been and it's been very, very pleasant. In fact, the most recent interaction I had with the city was looking at traffic control, our, traffic control on Withington because as I'm sure many residents have experienced, people just do not obey the speed limits going down, down the streets. So working with Justin and his team, we were able to put radars to track how, how fast cars were going down Withington. And, and I live on the block between Pine Chris and, and Evernoy. So he did two studies and recently he announced that the city is going to be implementing a new strategy to help slow down traffic down Withington. And I believe that the strategy that we're implementing on Withington is the first time that we're going to be implementing it here in Ferndale. I believe something that, a best practice from the East Coast. So again, just sharing how, how my interaction has been with the city. And I do encourage Ferndale residents to really work closely with City Hall. And if they do have questions or concerns, really go to City Hall, ask those questions, really become, learn the steps and empower, and, and become empowered in terms of using the systems. Because that's what I ended up doing. Learning the process, empowering myself to use the system, and now we're getting results. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address council this evening? All right, seeing none, we will move on. The next item of business is a public hearing and it's a special assessment sidewalk district 2019, as submitted by our DPW director. And Carlos, are you going to introduce the public hearing for us? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. How are you? This is the special assessive, assessment sidewalk district 2018, also known as SAD.
It's kind of a. We need a better acronym.
I was going to just say, that's kind of a bad acronym, but.
Yeah.
Uh.
Um, citywide program manually evaluates sidewalks by district with the goal of replacing aging or degrading squares to create safe conditions and reduce the likelihood of slip and fall accidents. The 2019 district includes properties located in the area from Woodward Heights to Ten Mile, Hilton Road to Lenox, and West Nine Mile to Oak Ridge, Highland to, to Woodward Avenue. Basically both northeast and northwest sections of the city. Previous years, we've, we've done one section at a time. This, this year we're doing two. That allowed us to secure lower bid numbers and also lower engineering costs as well. So we're anticipating it goes smoothly and this might be practice we, we move forward with in the future.
Excellent. So with that introduction, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone here that would like to address council on the sidewalk improvement program for 2019. So come on up to the podium and give us your name and.
Yeah, as I was saying, if the city council and the mayor isn't going to do anything, um, dude, may I have your car? Then one day we can go around Ferndale and I'll show you what I'm talking about. I showed the mayor and obviously he don't, anyway, um, I think to fix the problem since y'all don't want to do nothing about it. And I've been, you know, how many times now and obviously ended up in an accident and screwing up my back in the process. Let's either move those, the light posts or make the sidewalks bigger so that way when you got bikes coming, you got cut people with their dogs walking, then you got these businesses with their whatever. It's taken up 90% of the sidewalk. At least put our taxes to good use and make the sidewalk bigger for everybody. Cause that accident I had would have happened, mayor, if you, if you did what I asked you and did something with the amount of space. You know what I'm talking about. You go, you go downtown and this side, Nine Mile, you got these businesses, they got their, like from here to that wall and there's no freaking way for the bikers, the people walking their dogs and then Dream Crews. That's going to make things worse. These cannibals that they have in the middle of the street, that's not helping. So, you know, I don't know why you guys aren't hearing me. Are you guys waiting for something bad to happen and I end up suing? I mean, I don't understa, one last minute, cause there's been a few times where you've had people come up here three times.
Sir, please wrap up, please wrap up your comments, sir.
One last thing. When I was talking about the businesses, that gamer store over where the cupcake places, that's been closed a year. Again, you got all these businesses closing. There's no jobs.
Thank you, sir. This is the, this is about the sidewalk program?
Yeah, raising the prices.
Thank you.
Let's get it done or let's get somebody, new council or a new mayor at will.
Yeah. Could you make way for the, for the next speaker, please? Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, my name's Morgan. I live at 292 West Woodland. I obviously love Ferndale. As regarding the sidewalks, our neighbor told us in the wintertime that the city had cut down a tree in his, in between the lawn and the road.
Yeah.
You know, on the other side of the sidewalk. And that when the tree fell, it cracked our sidewalk and we're being charged for it. So I just wanted to bring it up here. I don't have a problem with the sidewalk redoing, but the city cut the tree down and it fell and like gouged out a huge hole in our lawn.
That seems like a, so.
Can you please leave your information with Carlos?
Yeah, okay. Yep, that sounds like an extenuating circumstance. Leave us your information and we'll follow up with you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes. Anyone else like to address council on the sidewalk program? Sir, I'm going to, I need you to lower your voice so we can have a conversation. Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Scott Lloyd. I live at 2102 Browning, which is right on the corner of Huron and Browning. Been a resident of Ferndale since 1989.
Wow.
I think I'm the lottery winner.
So far.
May I approach council with this picture?
Was that, yes, please. You can hand it to our clerk and she can, she'll pass it along to us. Have you been in the same house all that time?
Yes.
So what's going on, sir?
Well, I, I know in the letter that I read, special options available for those with anybody incomes or who own corner lots.
Yeah.
I have 33 slabs of sidewalk.
Gotcha. Yeah.
I look at my neighbor next door. He's got seven. And I've already replaced like five over the years.
Yeah.
And then I look at this one, and again, I know it's going to fail soon, but right now, there's been no separation. It's smooth. Uh.
Okay.
I'm just.
So a couple of things. Like the other gentleman, I would encourage you to talk to Carlos because he will do an inspection sometimes that, you know, you can convince him that it's not in the condition that they think it is. But then the second point to your, to your point, we do have a sidewalk hardship committee. And I don't know if you've heard about that, but they meet October 14th at 6:00 PM. It should be in the letter you got, but, and especially for people that live on the corner because we know that's an extra hardship because you have a lot more slabs. And for folks who, for income reasons and other reasons, we will work with you on a payment plan that will spread it out over the years so that it's not all at once. So if you want to come to the hardship committee on October 14th, right before the council meeting at 6:00, you're welcome to do that. And also the guy behind you, Carlos, would be willing to take your address and, and take a second look at it, see, see if they disagree.
October?
Okay.
Isn't that October, right?
Yes.
Yes. I know it seems a little ways off, but.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you for coming, sir.
Okay.
Uh, he's, if, if you want to give it to Carlos, he was, he's right there. The tall guy. All right. Anyone else that would like to address council? Carlos. Okay. Anyone else here to address council during the public hearing? All right. If not, I will close the public hearing and now I will open it up to council.
Well, through the chair.
Yeah.
Carlos, just for clarification, we have 10 sidewalk zones in the city, correct? So we do each, one zone each year. In this particular instance, we're doing two. And so in, in some of the instances, correct me if I'm wrong, we may see a minor crack in what a lot of people think is, you know, very, very minor, but we're not going to be in that district for another nine years. So we have to look that, that, that the degradation of that slab is going to occur over the last, over the next nine years. And we'd rather repair it now than wait nine years when it actually could cause some serious, serious issues. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Counsel, questions or a motion? There is a resolution.
Yeah, I'd move that we adopt the resolution as it's presented in the packet.
I support.
So it's moved by Martin and supported by Piana. Any last discussions or questions, comments? I'm just, I'm excited about doing two sections at once. It seems like one of those simple yet brilliant ideas that why do, why we never tried that before. But as long as they have the capacity to do two at once. It's the same firm, correct? As long as, I guess they have the capacity, that's a.
Their references checked out. Good work, good workforce before.
Good.
Well, it just, oh, sorry.
If I could, through the chair.
Yeah.
So, given that the sidewalk hardship committee meets in October and the summer taxes, so it'll go on the winter taxes. Am I correct? So the February bill?
Yes.
Okay. Never mind. Just answered the question.
Uh, Councilman Pollock.
So just for some historical clarification, we restarted the sidewalk replacement program about 20 years ago, if I'm not mistaken. So we're now coming into the, the third round and, and I remember.
You nod your head. Yes, I see the engineer nodding his head. So that's about right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're like two times through.
So we're in, yeah, we're in like the third loop, which I noticed from the billing is a lot less in years past. So obviously the program's working. We're repairing less sidewalks because we've replaced so many over the years. So it's, it's, the program's working. It took 20 years, but.
And we overhauled it, the sidewalk improvement program, what, five years ago or four years ago?
Well, we took responsibility.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
The city took responsibility for trees.
Um, could I ask, since every, because we got a letter too about one of our properties, but it's just one slab.
Another public hearing is closed, but Sharon, if you agree.
Oh, just, okay. So just as a, as a reminder, we all got the letters, but because that hardship committee isn't meeting until October 14th, could you send out a reminder letter to every one of those residents that got the initial letter about that date? So if they are having a hardship problem, they could come out to that board because there's no mention of that.
This is just an estimate. You will get a final letter with the final amount due and that will give you also the public hearing information. Not the public hearing, I'm sorry. The sidewalk hardship committee.
So you will be getting.
There will be a follow-up letter then. Okay. It will come out probably at the end of September.
Okay, super.
Thank you, Barb. Appreciate that. Thanks, Sharon.
Yeah. Well, and through the chair again, just for clarity, because in some instances, you may have marked a, a slab as needing work on, but it might only be, you might, you know, shave off the end because it's lifted up a little bit. Rather than replace the whole slab, you might just have to shave off an end, which is a cost reduction. So you're not paying for a whole new slab.
That's correct.
Okay.
And they're called flags, right?
Flags.
I finally learned this.
Flags. I knew I was saying the wrong term.
Nine years, I said the same thing, but flags, not slabs. But, all right, council, are we have a motion and a, and a support? Is there any other discussion?
Nope.
Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Let's see. Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Pollock.
Yes.
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Thanks, Carlos.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is the consent agenda. Consent agenda is items that council considers routine and we enact in one motion unless council removes something from the consent agenda. So let me read that now. Item A is the approval of the regular meeting minutes of May 13, 2019 and June 10, 2019. Item B is the request to backfill two police patrol officer positions. Item C is the request to backfill two firefighter positions. Item D is a request to backfill the open city manager position. Item E is a request to backfill the position of fire chief. Item F is the approval of the agreement with KRW to aid in the fire chief recruitment. Item G is the approval of the LLC ownership transfer grasshopper to 22757 Woodward Avenue LLC. Item H is the approval of adding closed captioning to Granicus. Item I is the approval of Lot 13 Alley Compactor refurbishing. Item 7J, approval of the street sweeper emergency repair. Item K is the approval of the First Amendment to Schiffer Park Memorandum of Understanding and Plans for Temporary Restoration of Schiffer Park in the amount not to exceed $9,000. Item L is the approval of the Eight Mile Boulevard Association Membership Dues Renewal. Item M is the approval of the year end budget amendment for fiscal year 2018 and 19. Item N is the approval of the 2019 pavement marking program. Item O is the approval of the Quantify Beta Test Proposal and Agreement. Item P is the 2019 Sidewalk Repair Program Bid Recommendation. Item Q is the approval of the engagement letter for manner Castarresen Certified Public Accountants for our annual audit. And finally, item R is the approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by the city manager's office and subject to review by the council finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
I'm sorry, can you remind me? I have questions of clarification. Do you want those now or after the motion?
Uh, um, now.
Okay. If I may.
Can I speak to that, please?
And then comments?
I said I have questions of clarification. I didn't know if that came before or after the motion, but it comes before.
Yeah. Okay. And then there'll be discussion on the consent agenda.
So if I may, on item 7I, the approval of the Como's compactor refurbishing?
Yes.
Um, I don't know who I'm addressing this to. But, okay. So we're refurbishing this compactor. What's the cost of an actual full replacement? Do we know?
Yeah, a full replacement, the estimates we've got are looking at about, I think, 20 and $30,000.
Okay.
Based on the quotes that I got.
And the bid from Reliable had a charge on disposal of the old oil fee. And that's absent from the proposal that we're potentially awarding this to. Why, do we know what the gap there is? Are they not disposing of the old oil? Or there's just no separate fee? Or that wasn't a necessary service?
I'd invite the DPW director, Carlos, to speak on that if he has that information. If not, I'm sure we can obtain that. If not, I'm sure we can obtain that. Well, what was the question again?
So there's a, on the bid we, we're not suggesting we take, there's a bid for the disposal of old oil, and that was partly contributed to why the bid was so much more expensive. On the bid that we're proposing we awarded to, there's no such charge or even any mention of disposal of the old oil environmentally.
Of the old oil, meaning hydraulic oil?
I don't know.
From the unit?
It just says old oil.
Old oil. I'm assuming that's hydraulic oil, and that can come back to our location and get recycled, basically.
Okay. So we think they're taking care of it in an environmentally responsible way, despite they're not charging us?
We'll be following up with that.
Okay. Perfect. That's great. And then one of the other issues on the compactor has always been capacity. You've got stuff overflowing on the other side. Does this refurbishment address the capacity issue?
It doesn't increase the size of it. It refurbs the unit, so there's no leaks to the operating system, so the capacity is gonna be the same.
Do we know, do we need extra capacity there? Or what's our sense about that?
I think that's one thing we're looking at right now, to evaluate if it, if it does need a larger size, or even if the other ones need to be larger or smaller.
Are we okay to do these repairs without knowing whether we need more, a bigger one?
Yes. Reason being, if that unit gets refurbished, and we have another one that goes down, we can always move that unit if, if that one gets replaced with a larger size.
So we're gonna use it anyway?
I think it'd almost be better to have a backup unit with the way these have been going and breaking down. And that way, we can move another one into place.
Thanks. And then on item seven K, which is the approval of the Schiffer Park amendment for temporary dollars. So the cost on the proposal is $7,980, but it's only listed for the grading and the gravel-like material that we're gonna temporarily use until we get to the real heavier project. But it also refers to metal flower basins, and there's no cost or quote for that. What am I paying for that?
So actually, CED is working with DPW to obtain some quotes for some planters that would be temporarily planted in that alley as part of the placemaking effort, and those planters would be relocated to support other placemaking efforts in downtown alleys. For example, the Whittington Alley.
This is more of a statement, though, but you're asking me to approve a cost. I don't know what it is.
They're, they're approximately $350 apiece, depending on the size. That's, that's worst case scenario.
Okay. That helps. Thank you. I'm fine.
Okay. Other questions of clarification? Or a motion?
I...
Oh. Yeah. After we have a motion, we will have comments.
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented. Support.
Moved by Piana, supported by Leaks May. Now, any discussion on the consent agenda?
Let's see. Seven H, approval of adding closed captioning to Granicus. YouTube offers an auto-generated closed captioning for free. It wouldn't cost $13,000. Know y'all love spending our money. And you can't do it fast enough. But YouTube offers this service for free. And across, aside from the other obvious embarrassing shortcomings from Granicus to date, this is absurd. Then we have seven K, approval of the Schiffer Park amendments and temporary restoration. The reason why we're having to do this at all, at a cost of $10,000, is because nine living Ferndale house drug their feet and drug their feet for four years with endless barrage of amendments to plan commission. Couldn't make up their mind what they wanted to do. Four years later, the thing's over the construction time, and now citizens have to pay another $10,000. Why don't you hit them up for this cost? It's not our fault. It's their fault. And seven M, approval of the year-end budget amendment. City Parks Department, 107 K increase in wages, full-time personnel. No wonder Ms. Wheeler's smiling all the time. Auto parking, so already forty K over budget.
You're at three minutes, so I need you to wind it up.
Okay. Special consulting fees, 200 K over budget. Contractual services, 2.8 million over budget. Already, this is already over. Fifty-two K for the website, over budget. And, you know, is anybody else looking at these numbers? Community and economic development.
Pam, your, your time is up. I'm sorry.
Twenty, yeah, yeah. Of course it is. You don't want to hear it, because it's the truth.
Good evening.
Hi. Sarah Brown, business owner, CrossFit AS160 Vester. So I had a question on the seven dot I for the compactor in our back alley. So the timing for the bid and when we think that's going to actually be replaced, and if that approval goes through, is that gonna be updated regularly? How is that going to be disseminated to us?
Is that a Carlos question or a Joe question?
That's a, that's a Carlos question.
Who wants to field that one? Joe, or Carlos? Yeah, come on up.
It's really a question of the lead time of delivering the actual product.
If it gets approved tonight, we'll make a call tomorrow, and I would assume you would see them out here the next week. They've been very responsive. Other, it's taken a while, and I apologize, because some of the companies that used to service those units, they're not being responsive for one reason or another. So we found this one, gave them a test of a small job to repair.
Carlos, just speak so we can all hear you.
I'm sorry.
Like, oh, you're the answer.
I'm straining really hard.
That voice is... Bottom line is, if it's approved tonight, you should probably see them out here tomorrow, or next week. We'll give them a call tomorrow, and it sounds like they'll be out here next week. And I can also, I can also keep you up to speed on when they're gonna be out here, if that helps.
Okay. Two more questions.
Okay.
In the meantime, so, does that mean they're gonna bring the compactor back and refurbish it on-site? Or are they going to be bringing back the same unit fixed and taking the dumpster away?
They will. That unit's at our yard, it's gonna have to get power washed again, so they can have a clean surface to work on. Until that unit gets repaired at our facility, you're gonna have that open top roll-off that's sitting out there right now. Yeah. We'll keep policing it like we are. We'll, we'll turn up the frequency if we have to. Whatever it takes to get you guys through it. And by the time you get the compactor back, it'll, it'll be like a brand-new unit.
Okay. And honestly, we really like the dumpster. It smells less than the compactor, surprisingly. Probably mostly just because it doesn't leak. So thank you for that temporary solution. And then, something you mentioned, Carlos, with the frequency of that compactor style that we have is breaking down regularly. Was there any other things that were quoted to see if a different solution would be more beneficial to the city long-term? Or something would be able, just a different solution, since those tend to break down more often?
There are old units. They, they've seen a lot of action over the years. So throughout this rebuild, the entire operating system's gonna get a go-through, along with the containment system, so you won't have that leakage that you guys have been dealing with. And we're also looking at getting the same company on board for coming out and doing routine maintenance to these units. Yes.
Through the chair, I'd also like to just zoom out. Also, city council, I wanted that acknowledged, that you guys did put forward what's part of your strategic goals for this year, to actually conduct a downtown sanitation plan, which we haven't had before. And that sanitation plan is going to inform both capacity issues, placement issues, and just some, some revenue recommendations to support any enhancements that may, may need to be coming from this. So we're looking to actually facilitate that process in the coming months, for the long-term solution.
Thank you. Lastly, I just want to say, it was already overfilled before Como's reopened, so without a doubt, Como's has been jumping. So I know there's a lot of trash that's gonna be coming through that, that same compactor as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to address the consent agenda this evening? All right. Counsel, comments or questions on the consent agenda?
Just one comment, and I don't know if it's a function of the new agendas, but again, can we please put the dollar amounts we're being asked to approve in the title on the agenda, not it buried in the packet?
Okay.
Thanks.
Yep. And I, through the chair?
Yes.
I would like to talk about seven H, which is the closed caption. And I did want to say to the staff, this was a crest that came through me, and I really appreciate the rapid response from staff to find a solution. I sit on the State of Michigan's Department of Civil Rights Council for Local Government on Education and Equity and Inclusion. And one of the MD CR directors, Michigan Department of Civil Rights Director on Division of Deaf, Deaf, Blind, and Hard of Hearing, approached me directly at this meeting and asked how we could make our city council meetings more inclusive for the folks who have a hard time hearing, and that we do have a, we do have a deaf population in Ferndale. And so I put this request in, and now we're taking a look at it, and it's on the agenda. But I was wondering if we could address the question about this service? If someone can talk about why we're paying for this service when it's free on YouTube?
Sure. Yeah, actually Kara and, and the clerk's office have been leading this. But I would also like, before she offers her explanation or description, to highlight that this is actually funded through public access, education and government fees, PEG fees. So this actually isn't tax dollars. These are PEG fees that are paying for the service. It's part of the broadcast of public minutes.
So can you just explain where the PEG fees come from?
PEG fees actually come from cable service providers who have franchise agreements to operate within the city. So that would be Comcast, Wow, and AT&amp;T are our primary contributors for that.
Kara?
Kara, can you respond to the question?
Absolutely. So yes, YouTube does offer free closed captioning on their videos.
Can you speak closer to the mic?
Yes.
I'm really having a hard time hearing tonight.
No problem.
The mic's not on.
I don't, is the mic on?
I think so?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I just need to be louder. So yes, YouTube does offer closed captioning for free as part of their service now. However, we have a lot of different audiences viewing our meetings in a lot of different ways. We offer live streaming through our website. We have meetings run on our cable channels through Comcast, Wow, and AT&amp;T, U-verse. And this is a way to provide accessibility to everybody who wants to view and keep up with the meetings, regardless of how they're able to get it.
Okay. So multiple channels of, be able to watch it, and you have to have one, multiple formats in order to get to the, to our residents?
Yes. Absolutely. And we actually met with, I believe her name was Annie Yereski?
Yes. Thank you for doing this.
Yes. With the Division on Deaf and Hard of Hearing. And she said this is, this is an absolutely essential service that city should be offering. She really applauded Ferndale's, you know, willingness to get involved with this, and expressed just how much of a deaf and hard-of-hearing population we have. And so we were really happy to be able to do this. The other thing is, when we put the onus on something like YouTube, we're not sure exactly what we're gonna get. But with this service, I believe it's done, Barb can say this, but I believe it's done on like a thirty-second lag. So it's almost in real time.
I appreciate the explanation, and I appreciate the, the quick response, and a quick, I think it's been less than a month, so thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes.
And just for clarity, I'm not sure if you know the history, but back in the seventies, when cable service just started to get popular, the government actually implemented a requirement of all cable companies to add a tax that local government would then receive to support government, local government television. So the fees that you're talking about are coming from, when I pay my Wow bill, there's a fee that I pay that then goes through back to the city. Correct? Yes, to support public broadcasting. Yes.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions on the consent agenda? If not, Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mayor Pro Tem Pollock?
Yes.
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes. Thank you. Consent agenda is adopted. Moving on now to the regular agenda. Item A is the consideration of the appointment of Michael Thompson to the Beautification Advisory Commission. You're the, you're the...
Yeah. Is Michael here, by chance? Okay. Well, Michael applied to be appointed to the Beautification Commission. I think he'll make a fantastic member. He's actually a sod farmer, which is an interesting background. He's done work in that industry for about twenty years. He's also finished his bachelor's in business, and he's working on his master's degree in urban planning at Eastern Michigan. So been a Ferndale resident for about five years, so I'd like to recommend we appoint him to the Beautification Commission. And to that end, I would like to move that we approve the appointment of Michael Thompson to the Beautification Advisory Commission, for term expiring 12/31/21.
Support.
And I would just add, it's a mayoral appointment with the approval of council, and this mayor is approving. Thank you for bringing that forward. Any comments or other questions or comments?
That's an interesting background.
Isn't it? Yeah. I like that a lot.
All right. Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes. Thank you. That appointment is adopted. Moving on now to item B, the consideration of an inclusive housing and community affordability plan. And Jordan, you're gonna introduce that item?
Thank you, Mayor Counsel.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Yes, so I'm going to just tee this item off. Obviously, all the materials for this were attached online and in your packets, but Adam Loomis, our Community Development Specialist, is in the House as well to help provide any answers to any technical questions. Adam has been the one that's providing point on this project for our department, for the city, working with the vendor and the RFP committee that led to this moment. So we prepared these brief slides just for yourselves and for the folks at home just following along to provide some background and context as to why this item is here today and what it's all about and what we hope to achieve as a city with it. And obviously, we'll be here for questions as well. Just an overview, a little bit of background on the increased prioritization of affordable housing in Ferndale, which has really been led by you, City Council, in terms of directing city staff to increase this as a priority and to pursue it. And so these are a few milestones we wanted to highlight just as part of that journey. So 2016, 2017, the Master Land Use Plan update, as well as the City Strategic Plan, were two major vehicles that really enshrined this as a priority sort of explicitly, setting out goals to preserve it where it exists and pursue it where it doesn't throughout the city. December 2017, the inclusive housing policy was adopted, and this reflected creating affordability as a goal in projects where state law would allow us to do so. So it's a matter of policy right now in the city of Ferndale that any project that's either on city-owned land or receiving tax incentives from the city, again, these are the two scenarios that state law allows, all of those that are 25 units and up would have to provide 25% affordability in their projects. Another milestone that has happened sort of summer/fall 2018, which is sort of a next step, which kind of leads again to today, was an action plan request for proposals. So the inclusive housing policy was sort of viewed as a first step, knowing that, you know, this is just dealing with new units that are coming into town. You know, there's 11,000 structures in town, 20,000 residents. So even as new projects come to town, there's still a larger citywide need. So council directed staff to look at developing a request for proposals to engage policy experts in developing targets, setting goals, providing performance metrics, and building on a plan that engages this community in that effort. And so what you see tonight is the RFP that was selected as a result of a public process that spanned several months to make sure we got the right fit and engaged a lot of stakeholders in that effort. So going to talk a little bit about what the deliverables are, and, sorry, I hit the button twice there, just talk about what this plan is and what it's going to consist of at a high level. And again, we can get into details as there are questions. So the deliverables on the left and the engagement plan on the right. So the deliverables, what you're going to get, definition and goals. So a market analysis of the situation in our city as it relates to both us and then just our context in the surrounding region, defining inclusionary housing and inclusive housing goals. So generally, you know, folks hear those phrases, and you sort of have a general idea of what you mean by that. But when you start getting down to what are you going to do about it, that's when your definition of terms, the targets that you're looking for, and the levers that you want to pull to affect a goal really matter. So going through that process with our stakeholders to get everybody sort of on the same page in terms of what do we all mean by this and what do we want to pursue, and proposing a policy framework that reflects those shared community goals and targets. So task B is developing metrics. So we set our goals and our targets. How do we measure progress? And who's going to measure progress? And how often are you going to measure progress? So creating those metrics and developing a monitoring plan so that we can hold ourselves accountable as a community on this goal. Task C is a baseline assessment. So we go through this definition process, setting up metrics and targets, and then a baseline assessment. So based on all of that work we did in items A and B, where do we stack up as a community relative to the goals and targets that we established? And then flowing from that, action items. So we've, we've goals, targets, metrics, we've assessed ourselves, so now what are we going to do about it based on where we are? So that's where you get into short and long-term recommendations, and then processes for evaluation and assessment. And then, of course, that's all baked into a final plan that'll cover about 24 months of actions that will move us concretely on that journey as we sort of work to aggressively pursue and preserve affordable housing. Anchored in this project is robust community engagement to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to be involved in this process and shape what it is and what it does. So these tasks A through D, communications and engagement plans. So what we're going to do is create an inclusive housing and affordability website similar to when a development process has a lot of steps, has a big effect on the community, whether it's a rezoning, whether it's a land use change. Oh, sorry. Basically, that's, I wasn't sure what that was. So essentially, what we'll be doing is creating a website where all this information will live, just like the project pages that we have for those developments, all the documents, all the meeting dates, all the information, opportunities to provide comments, talk to people, talk to each other. That webpage will exist on the city website for all to see and engage with. Materials development. So the firm that we selected has been doing this for several cities for several years. And so they have a template that they follow. They create fact sheets that really break down the data about our community into ways that people can understand and relate with. Who are the types of folks that benefit from affordable housing? Who are the, who are the types of folks that we're trying to serve? What does that profile look like here in Ferndale? And just kind of helping tell that story so people can kind of attach to it and understand what we're looking at. And then providing meetings. So in addition to work products, meetings where people can free-form engage and shape the information as we go. Task C, again, more storytelling, so more pieces where people can understand what exactly we're talking about and how they can get involved. This idea of creating these vignettes on housing stories. So what those are essentially, think of like a blog post or any kind of other, you know, material you might read online. It's sort of just an idea to quickly and succinctly capture a story and really distill those important points of like, what does that mean for affordable housing, especially in the context of Ferndale? And then again, civic engagement. So in addition to all this materials that we're going to generate that'll help communicate this information and get it out there, engagement on social media and providing multiple presentations. So you can see there's at least three there, and you'll note that the project is asking for an amount not to exceed $70,000 because if you look at the items, the plan is $54,000, the community engagement is $12,000, so that you add those two numbers up, you're just over $66,000. We wanted to leave a little bit of a cushion if we wanted to schedule a different, additional meetings, have additional materials developed at the request of the community. So we wanted to have a little bit of a buffer in case that was desired. So that's kind of just a quick foreshadowing on the numbers. Then just kind of going into the process. So this flow chart just kind of shows exactly what the process has been and where we're going and where we are. So if you look at that red box, that's where we are tonight, budget approval. So obviously, this was included in the budget that council approved back in April. Now we're here with the expenditure. So this started again with the RFP and bid selection, which was a public process and public bids. So that was concluded around March 2019. This was, item was included in the city's triennial budget, which was approved back in April. Now here we are on the budget request, what would come next if this project moves forward? A market analysis would be finalized this fall, looking at September 2019. We would then, with that data in hand, LSA would come here at the end of July to kick off the project and really start showcasing some of the data, and the community engagement materials would begin. You'd be looking at, again, from July of this year through February of 2020, sort of the end of the project. We'd expect about a first draft and a report on initial findings roughly October, November of this year. From that, you know, there's opportunities, additional engagement, additional input, course correcting as the community sees fit. And then you would see finalized plan details roughly November 2019 through February 2020. So after that first draft and people have a chance to react to that and participate in that, the direction established from those community conversations would go into finalizing the plan. And then you would see a final plan presentation sort of the end of February 2020 at an early date, but possibly March of 2020 to have all that work done. So that's the process that this would take. And that, at a high level, is the project. And again, all those materials online currently as part of this agenda, sort of the backup of how we got to LSA and what the details of their proposal. But this was just, again, at a high level to show sort of the milestones of this project. And with that, any questions?
Yeah. So are there questions of clarification before I ask for a motion? Thank you. All right. So before conversation, a motion would be in order.
I move, I move to approve the inclusive housing and community affordability plan and approval of the financial request from CDG General Fund Special Consulting Fees to conduct the market study and create the inclusive housing and community affordable plan and to authorize total project cost of $70,000.
Support.
I move by, yes.
Just through the chair, Your Honor, it seems the motion also would be to approve the specific agreement with Lisa Sturvant and Associates as set forth in the council material.
And to approve the contract with Lisa Stevins?
Sturvant. Sturvant.
Sturvassit, through the chair.
Sturvassit?
Sturvassit, yes.
Sturvassit.
Yes. Sorry, Lisa, if you're listening.
And that is supported.
So it's been moved and supported.
May I offer a friendly amendment?
Yeah.
Can we change the language to not to exceed $70,000? There is a difference. And that matches the language of Justin presented.
Yes, I accept, I accept the friendly amendment.
I support the amendment.
All right, thank you. All right, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item?
Special consulting fees are already at $45,000. The budget costs are $92.5, so another $70,000 is going to put you over budget again. There are already $67,000 over on the contractual services. I fail to see how yet another slick sales pitch is going to tell us anything different than what you've been forcing down our throats already, which is that all the millennials want to live in apartments and don't want to own property. So they want to throw all their money away on rent and have nothing to show for it and not expect them to wake up at some point and want to put in some equity. It's going to tell you the same thing you've been saying all along. And as far as affordable housing goes, Justin threw out to change the ordinance for developers that they not be allowed to have siding. Now, how can they build affordable housing with high-end materials? None of this is making any sense, and it's just another snake oil sales pitch. And you're just throwing our money here and there and everywhere when 2024, you've got a rollback, you've got a millage that's going out, you're not cutting back on your spending at all. In fact, you're accelerating it. And are you going to threaten us to gut and annihilate our public safety, fire department and police department again like you did last time so you can get another millage out of us? This is just sick. Shame on you.
I'd like to touch in what this awesome lady had just said, ma'am, we'd make a good team. We have, obviously, the same, if we will, the devil's advocates. As far as affordable housing, you know, again, you guys jack up the prices and everything. Businesses are closing. There's people in your city that are looking for jobs that no one around here is hiring. As I was saying, that game, video game place that was open last summer, that was awesome. That's gone. Again, you got that AT&amp;T place, it's like, the building's like this, kind of, like this, or kind of, and there's, and that hasn't been open, and I've been living in this area since 2007. I mean, I, I myself have been trying to get a...
Sir, the topic is the affordable housing plan, so if you could, if you, if you could keep your comments to that.
Everything you guys are doing affects people's ability to afford anything. When you don't have jobs in Ferndale so people can afford them, what affordable housing? There won't be none, there ain't none. And with y'all up there, if we don't get nobody new up there, the whole lot of you, this place is going to be a ghost town. Ma'am, you and I, we got a lot in common. Let's talk.
All right, thank you, sir. Have a seat, please.
I'll sit when I want. You don't pay my checks.
You'll sit now, sir. Thank you. I understand this is the campaign year, but we're not, I'm not going to allow that podium to become some soapbox for anything you want to talk about. If you had a specific comment about this plan, you're always more than welcome to talk about it. I get that people want to talk about other things, but we're going to run a meeting here tonight, sir. So please sit down. All right, is there any other discussion on council, on the housing plan?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment. So City Council prioritizes these investments going forward, and my computer just died. So I'm going to use yours.
They're all, they're all open up there.
I forgot my cord. Not a good planning tonight, eh? Where is it?
Well, they're in reverse order, so that's the first, second, third, fourth.
Will you pick me the one with the proposal? So City Council has definitely heard from residents.
You made fun of my paper copy of the agenda, but here's where it comes in.
I know. My, the city has been hearing for over a year about the need to look at our housing supply and putting it on the plan, the strategic plan. It's been part of the master plan, which is what we heard from the residents as a need to take a look at as our city continues to prosper in so many ways. And for me, having outside experts collect the data so that we can make data-driven decisions about future investments and put policies in place, this is about to incentivizing potential projects so that we can meet the demands of affordable housing. Affordable housing needs is a challenge across the state of Michigan. It's not just Ferndale. And I know that the state is looking at it too, at least particularly from the Michigan Municipal League. And with 14% poverty in Ferndale, that's what we have, we're looking at everybody who kind of lives in Ferndale, from kids who can create some wealth by investing in a home and staying in Ferndale over time and build some wealth. We're also looking at seniors who can transition from a single-family home down into something smaller and seeing if we have enough supply to do that, based off of studies from the Urban Land, Urban Institute. There's not even enough supply of housing for our aging region. So we need to figure out what we need to be able to contribute to house our residents in the future. And having the right data to do that so that we make the wise and best possible decisions to serve the residents from now until the future is a critical need, and I'm in support of this proposal.
Other council members?
Yes. So just recently, I was proudly able to speak about the effect of affordable, of affordable housing. Whereas it's not directly in our neighborhood, I'm just literally a block down the street from it, and I'm really proud to have been a part of the Jefferson project that was brought on by the Ferndale Schools when I was on the school, Ferndale Schools Board of Education. The reason why I'm proud of that is, one, yes, affordable housing is a necessity in this community. Two, I know for a fact that there are families living in that housing unit right now that would not have been able to afford being here even close enough. They're outside, right outside of Ferndale Innell Park, but I know that there are families that are living there. And I just happen to, if you get the, if you are so inclined, if you ride, drive north on Republic, excuse me, south on Republic, when you drive past that housing unit, you will see a proud Ferndale graduate sign sitting out right side, outside one of those residents. So people that are living there, I, I'm really proud. I think that's one of the best things that we did for the school board, and I'm excited and definitely support the study for the housing unit here because I think it's necessary. And I'm just, I'm wholeheartedly in support of it. I'm very passionate about affordable housing, and I'd love to see some form of it here in Ferndale.
Other comments or questions? You both had an opportunity to address council on this topic.
That subject just changed.
No, we're still on the same item.
Well, no.
I'm sorry, you're out, you're out of order. You had an opportunity to speak on this subject. Take that $70,000 for your little study and throw it into building an affordable house. Please have a, how about that? Please have a seat, ma'am. Thank you.
And put the job so people can afford their affordable housing.
I'm not going to ask you again, sir.
I wouldn't be here if you did the job.
We're trying to conduct an orderly meeting. We have rules that are very fair to let everybody have an opportunity to speak, but you don't get to dominate the meeting, okay? Thank you.
That's the, that's the thing that you said when you started.
Thank you. All right, other comments or questions of council? All right, we have, we have a motion, right?
Yes.
And a support by Leaks May. So if there's no other discussion, Barb, would you call the roll, please?
I think we'll start with council, or Mayor Protem Polika.
Yes.
Councilmember Piana.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Thank you, Jordan. Moving on now to the next item of business, it's the consideration of the city of Ferndale full LED streetlight conversion project, and Erin is going to introduce that item.
Thank you. Good evening. Can you hear me okay? Okay, now you can hear me.
Yeah.
So thank you for having me this evening. Like Mayor said, I'm here to present the proposal for a full LED streetlight conversion for the DTE-owned streetlights here in the city of Ferndale. I have invited our Representative Reggie Brown from DTE here as well. And so if there are technical questions that you have following my brief overview, please feel free to direct those questions towards him as well as myself, and we'll be able to answer them. So a brief background on kind of how this came to be, council approved the consulting services from EcoWorks to evaluate our streetlights in the city of Ferndale to see ownership, condition, and provide insight into how we could conduct a full LED conversion. As part of this, it was stemmed out of the Master Land Use Plan as well as some strategic plan items to conduct this LED conversion, as well as continue to do energy efficiency projects throughout the city to then start a revolving energy fund. So this particular proposal is to retrofit the 1,744 DTE LED, DTE-owned streetlights to LEDs, and this full conversion would be $418,240 for that. Then the interesting thing about this proposal is that it has a payback period of less than two years, which is pretty remarkable. The savings that we would achieve is immediate as soon as the LEDs would be converted. And so this proposal was brought by DTE, I believe it was in May, they did the revised proposal for us to include the full LED conversion, and the annual savings that we would achieve even after the payback would be $161,078, or $78 and change. And all the work would be completed by November 30th of this year. So those savings would be realized very quickly. I think that that has a pretty good overview of the proposal this evening. So Reggie, I don't know if you wanted to come up and introduce yourself and if you had anything else to add to that, and then otherwise, we can answer your questions.
Excellent, thank you. Excellent. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, city council. Uh, Mayor, uh, Mayor Protem and city council. Uh, my name is Reginald Brown, account manager for DTE, and I'm the sound, assigned representative for the street lighting.
Okay. Right. So are there questions of clarification or a motion?
I mean, they're both good numbers, but can you just, could you clarify the payback period? The packet says 2.2 years, and you said it's under two years?
I meant to say it's just over two years.
Okay, that's great.
I'm sorry.
No, no, that's, it's fine. It's just, yeah, my little, the way my mind works, gotta rectify.
So, through the chair, if I, so it's 150,000 a year, right? Is that what the, the saving, the savings is, if I look correctly?
160, 178, 42.
Yeah, when, so annual savings, what's that, over a 10-year period?
1.6 million.
1.6 million? So, over a 10-year period, we're saving a lot of money with this upfront investment now?
Yes.
So...
One thing I, I missed and I wanted to mention as well is, I mentioned the revolving energy fund, and, um, if this is approved this evening, this would be the launch to that revolving energy fund, which is slated to come to council for official approval in July. And that was also, um, part of the EcoWorks consulting fees that, or consulting program that they did for us to, uh, establish the revolving energy fund, which uses those realized cost savings for future energy efficiency projects.
Is there a motion?
I move that we approve $418,240 from the capital improvement fund for the city of Ferndale's full LED streetlight conversion.
Support.
All right. Now, discussion.
Um, I, actually, I have clarification.
Yeah.
Um, so, a lot of people have a lot of ideas about streetlights. Um, and just for clarification, if you could, um, we own 2% of the streetlights. And where are those kind of located? They're really not, it's not on Woodward, or is it on Woodward? Is it on Nine Mile?
Most of our streetlights that we own are in parking lots.
In parking lots?
Yep. And then there are some that are along our main downtown core.
Okay.
Right in...
The decorative ones, probably?
More of the decorative, yep.
Okay. Okay. So, it's not, and, and you do DTE's agreement with almost every city that doesn't have a lighting department. Um, is that you own and maintain the lights, we pay you for maintenance?
Correct. Up under the optional agreement, that is correct.
Yeah.
Um, through the chair, can you also do a, a clarification for DTE? We've also heard some suggestions about turning these lights into solar. And what would the payback be for the investment or payback be for solar, and if that was looked at as well? Is that something, uh, we just had suggestions from residents about that?
I don't have the specific, uh, figures on what the, would the cost would be for solar street lighting. Um, but I did do a lot of investigation for solar lighting in particular when I was, uh, working with Lorena on a lot of different parks projects. And one of the things that I found from speaking to a few different consultants that provide those solar lights is that, um, some of the sta, some of the safety standards for illumination are not quite met for the street lighting that we would require in our particular area. And so that would be one of the constraints, not to say that it couldn't happen, it, that would just be something to be concerned with. And so, um, as such, one of the solutions that I did speak with those consultants about was having battery backups. And I fear that it just may be, um, more maintenance and more work to compromise the safety for the lighting. But it's certainly something, if there's requests to look further into that, I'd...
Well, I was wondering if DT could, uh, answer, or how many cities, uh, did they know of that have solar-powered streetlights?
Well, particularly in our case, um, most of the streetlights that we deal with up under our, uh, particular municipalities are basically for the optional. So anything outside of that, um, project scope for solar, that would be total for the municipality to decide.
Okay.
Other comments or questions?
I'm excited to save the city a lot of money.
Yep.
Over a 10 year, 10 year period. So, thank you.
Well, since I have the DTE guy here, this might not, oh, go ahead.
Well, I just, uh, again, for, for clarity. So, all we're really doing is replacing the bulbs. Or as I said to Joe, we're unscrewing those and screwing the new ones in, right? We're not doing any kind of replacement of light fixtures.
You're, you're actually replacing the light fixture itself.
Yep.
The unit within, you're saying?
Say that again.
The unit within?
The unit itself, like your Cobra fixtures, we're changing out the whole Cobra fixture head, and we're reinstalling a retrofit, a brand new fixture, Cobra fixture, which is gonna be LED.
Okay.
But I think one of, one of your points was that it wouldn't be that necessarily the entire pole, the entire unit.
Yes.
As a whole, it would be the elements that would house, uh, the LEDs, so that LED could be successful for illumination.
Okay. Thank you. That's it, sorry.
All right. No, that's good. There's no other questions or comments? Uh, Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Forget where I left off last time. Uh, let's, council member Leaks May. I was gonna say, it's my turn. Okay.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Polika.
Yes.
Councilmember Piana.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, our final regular agenda item this evening is a consideration of the proposed amendments to the Medical Marijuana Regulatory Ordinance, Section 74123 of the City of Ferndale Code of Ordinances. Uh, Joe, you're in, I mean, uh, Joe, um, Jordan, you're introducing that, or, yeah? This follows our discussion from last week?
Absolutely.
Last council meeting, correct? Yep?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council. Yes, uh, Mayor, you're correct. This, this follows on our discussion from the last, the last item. Justin is actually not in the office, uh, today, so I'm pinch hitting for him. Essentially, uh, just in brief, uh, this, this allows for an extension, essentially for procedural matters, uh, within the CED Building Department. If, if, if it's essentially waiting on the state to give them the preapproval, and they've made the effort and they're close to a C of O, this would allow an extension for those purposes. I am pleased to report that all three applicants, of the three, one has already been issued a C of O, and the other two, we expect them to finish their work this week. So, uh, that's sort of where they'll stand. Um, and again, as you said, uh, so well, Mayor, that this essentially continues the conversation from last meeting and, and provides the opportunity for that extension. I would defer to, uh, City Attorney Dan Christ to elaborate on the details of that.
I guess, my first question is, is this necessary? If they're gonna, if they're gonna meet their, the original requirement, is, is it necessary to do an extension?
Well, uh, through the, through the chair, they won't have the state-issued license, and that was the issue.
Because of the, the certificate.
So, this, uh, this proposed ordinance, uh, adds the clarity that council, uh, sought from last meeting, where the applicants will have to have applied for their final inspection necessary in order for them to get a certificate of occupancy. I, I think what Jordan's indicating is they're all, one of them already has a certificate of occupancy. The other two are in the process, I believe have requested those final inspections.
That's correct.
Inspections haven't happened.
Yeah.
But they won't, it's not anticipated that they will have the state-issued license by the end of the month. And, and that's what this affords those applicants. The permit won't be lost because of that inaction by the state.
And are any of the applicants here and wanna, uh, address, uh, address this issue? Yeah. Good evening.
Good evening. Todd Levy here for Thrive Enterprises. That's your, uh, permittee at 1551 Academy. Um, I think I said enough last week. I just wanna thank the council for taking my suggestions into account. Although we have, um, asked for final C of O this week, it doesn't mean that we're gonna get it. There could be one little tiny thing, and we'd have to go another few days. That's just kind of lying. You know, I was here last week to, much applause in the back, so. I've got nothing else. If you have anything else you can ask, I'm, I'm here.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Peter Tanglos. Uh, I represent the licensee, 1921 Hilton. And we're almost there.
Yeah.
So we'd really like to thank, uh, city council, the mayor, all the staff, uh, for all the hard work. I'm sure you guys are, uh, sick of talking to us by, by now. Uh, we're very close. Uh, our concern is, and, I don't know, the, the language bothers me a little bit, but I don't really wanna mess it, mess with it too much. I just wanna give some, uh, just some guidance, uh, to the city as to what happens, 'cause I've done about 30 licenses, and I've done a whole bunch of phase-two inspections with the, with, with the, uh, state. And this is why there's gonna be delays, because what happens is when you upload your application, uh, they send the inspector out. Our inspector's coming in on Wednesday morning. And even when they do the inspection, they pass you, it goes to the IT department to put all the information, and that takes a few days. And then you gotta pay the $66,000 before you even get your license. So that could go three or four days. So on the inspection side also, if they find some little thing that they can ding you on, that also takes a few days. So my, my concern was just with the language a little bit. It says, "Failure to consider the application," that the state would, you would get an extension if there's a failure to consider the application. The state is considering the application, it just takes them a long time to run it through. So my only, uh, objection, other than thanking you for just giving us time and time and trying to work with us through this, is just that particular language. The state does consider the application, it just takes them time to run through the final steps. So there wouldn't be a denial, there would be something of the effect that, okay, uh, we're giving it to IT, we're giving it here, or they may find one little small thing that needs correction. And the only thing that we're worried about is having the rug pulled underneath us at the last minute when we're, we're all done. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, what council's pleasure on the, on the side?
My pleasure is for these businesses to be open and have a chance to be successful.
Right. It's a long time coming, right? Yeah. Is there a motion?
I move, uh, I move to approve the proposed amendments to the Medical Marijuana Regulatory Ordinance, Section 7-4123 of the City of Ferndale Quote of Ordinances.
Support. By Polika, supported by Martin. All right. Now, discussion. Comments, questions?
I'm in favor of this, but it's my last extension. I'm done after this one. So whatever happens, happens. So, I'm, so, gotta be fair to the other businesses in the pipeline.
Well, I share your anxious, your anxiousness, and I appreciate that there's been a lot of movement, and I expect that we'll, we'll get there. So it feels like the, the, the goalposts are there, and we're, we're close. So I appreciate everyone's efforts in helping us get there, and, and, yeah, as councilwoman says, hopefully this is our last bite at this apple, and we'll get some businesses open. And as we, as we talked about last week, uh, primary, you know, the most important thing is for the, for the patients in Ferndale that wanna, and, and the surrounding area that wanna use it, so. Other comments or questions? All right. Barb, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Polika.
Yes.
Councilmember Piana.
Yes.
And Leaks May.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes. Thank you. That item is adopted. Uh, that concludes our regular agenda this evening. The next item of business would be called to council. Let's start with the fire chief all the way in the back. Anything for the good of the community, from the fire department?
Hello, Mayor and council.
Good evening.
Um, just to let you guys know, I know you guys were aware of the fire we had, cleaners a couple months ago, spontaneous combustion of cooking oils and cotton rags. We had another close call last Friday. Um, we found, uh, got a call from a restaurant during business hours, we're smoking the building. Uh, we found, our crews found a mop that was stuffed in a corner, and it was just starting to catch fire. It was soaked in cooking oil. Uh, it could've been really bad if the restaurant was closed, we're just glad they were open. They didn't have any damage, it didn't close anything down, but, um, working with Kara and Lindsay for a PSA to get out there.
That's exactly what I was gonna say, is since this is kind of a thing that not everyone's aware of, yeah, we could do some business owner education.
Two spontaneous fires in the last five fires that we had.
Yeah.
So, hope it, hope it was just a fluke around here.
Good.
Um, also, Fourth of July's coming up. Let's be mindful of our neighbors with fireworks. Um, be very careful with alcohol consumption, as well as discharging your fireworks.
Yep.
Um, heat emergencies, you know, wear your sunblock. Stay hydrated. Fire does EMS as well, so we wanna make sure everybody's being safe.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Good reminder. Thank you, Chief. And thank you for, yeah, go ahead.
Um, I don't wanna put you on the spot. Can you remind us what the rules are that we voted on of when you can light fireworks?
Fireworks. So, I looked into it with PD as well, and I looked on the state website, and what we're going for is the 29th through the 4th, 11:00 AM to 11:45 PM.
Okay. And not the 5th, because the 5th isn't a Saturday or something? It was very weird.
5th is a Friday.
5th is a Friday this year, yeah.
But if the 5th is a Saturday, then that applies, or something like that. It was very weird, the, the language.
Right.
Okay.
Through the chair, it's specified right in the state, the amended state statute, and I'll provide, uh, a, a confirmation with respect to that language to the city.
And then, Kira, if you get that information out as well, in all the great ways that you do so, uh, reminding our residents when they can, and more importantly, cannot do fireworks. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Uh, Chief Palazolo, anything from the fire, I mean, the police department this evening? No. Uh, Lorena, anything from the Parks and Rec, uh, this evening?
Just to recap, from this weekend, we had our, um, Geary Park Skate Park Cleanup Event, and it was a success. We had over 60, um, park advocates in attendance that assisted with cleanup of picking up trash around the park, um, as well as cleaning the Heroes Memorial Garden, and, um, some construction debris around the skate park. Um, we had the pleasure of having, um, Councilwoman Piana, as well as, um, Leaks May in attendance, um, the Tony Hawk Foundation, and, of course, Skate Park Respect out of California, who's a nonprofit that assisted us with, was a direct partner in, um, getting that, um, event going. Um, in addition, we have, um, a few events coming up. We have, uh...
On that, though, if you don't mind, um, on the skate park, 'cause I'm getting a lot of questions of this. We did that event, and now I think a lot of people thought, oh, good, it's open, and they've been going in there and stuff. But when is the official, it's not open yet, right? And when is the official opening?
Yep. So, um, this should be the last week. We'll be wrapping up with construction with Evergreen, and once they're all complete, and we do our final walkthrough and remove the temporary fencing, we will have a soft opening. It'll be open for use. We'll have the rules posted up by then.
I know people are very anxious, and they're getting in there, and they're going in there, but, hold on, another week.
Another week, yep.
Are we gonna do a ribbon cutting?
Yes, so, the official grand opening will be later in the season, probably around September.
Great. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but, yeah, I've been hearing about folks wanting to be there.
So, a few other events we have coming up is our Fitness Fuse, Fitness Fest, Ferndale Fitness Festival, which will be held on Saturday, July 13th. We have several gyms that are involved, we're very excited about that, you should see some flyers going up as early as tomorrow, as well as on Facebook. We have our Park at Night, which is movie and music in the park, at Harding Park, on July 11th, which is a Thursday, and we'll be featuring Lego Movie 2, and that starts at 6:00 PM. Our youth soccer, fall soccer program is open for registration as of now, so if anybody's interested, this is a time, it fills up pretty fast. Our kickball league is pretty successful, the city team, I must say, we're one for one right now, I don't know how it's going today, but I'm sure, it's a lot of fun, so, just wanted to put that up there, but that new league is going very well, and we're at capacity with that. Thank you.
Actually, through the chair?
Yeah.
Just want to make sure, do you have any more camp openings left? Are you filling up?
We are full on a lot of, majority of our weeks, but there are some weeks that, that aren't full. We also have a waiting list, which occasionally, you know, it happens often, where we do call people off the waiting list, because people have last-minute vacations, or may need to cancel, and we'll go to the next person on that list. So, if anybody's interested in still registering for summer camp and the week is full, just make sure you put your name on the waiting list.
Excellent. I'm not gonna lie, I didn't know there was a Lego Movie 1, but I'm excited you're bringing 2 to town. Guess I'll have to watch 1 first.
Probably not.
What?
Probably not.
Or not? Anything from parking this evening? Oh, all right. Carlos, anything else from DPW this evening? All right. Cindy, DDA stuff that you'd like to share with the community?
Good evening, just a couple quick things. John Bry was here from Oakland County today, and Oakland County also offer, offers a lot of opportunities for grants, both for the downtown and for businesses. The DDA was just awarded a grant from Flagstar Bank for $2,500 for a bench and planter wall project that we'll be doing in front of affirmations, so we're looking forward to working more with DPW to get those logistics worked out and get that project started. We also have our movie nights coming up, the first movie will be the 3rd Thursday in July, the 18th, we are showing Spider-Man Into the Spider-Verse. August, we will show The Goonies, and September, we will show Beetlejuice. We just, last week, held our fundraiser for public art, Art of the Cocktail, which was really well-attended, I don't have final numbers in yet, but it looks like this was the most successful one ever. Huge shout-out to our volunteers and our sponsors, and everybody that came to the event and donated to the silent auction. I'll have those, that information for you next month, but the winning cocktail, the cocktail for downtown Ferndale, is titled Leaving on a Jet Plane, and it was created by Guy Kroll and Jenna from the Elks Club this year, so that will be featured on their menu, so if you're a member of the Elks, or you're thinking about it, stop in and try one out.
The Elks Club stepping up, that's a fierce competition, awesome.
That's it.
Good, thank you, Cindy. Dan, anything from HR this evening?
Public relations.
All right, finance?
No, but I did get an update on the score, it was a million to none, and the city was losing.
Was losing? A million to one.
No, a million and one.
To nine. Ouch. Jordan, anything else from Community and Economic Department?
I know, nothing.
All right. Kara, well, because all the heavy players are here, right? I mean, you guys are shorthanded tonight, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Kara, anything else from Communications this evening? All right. Barb, how about from the City Clerk's office?
Nothing, except Marnie's back.
Marnie's very good.
Yay.
Excellent. Joe, anything from the City Manager's office?
Just one brief reminder, that City Hall offices are closed during the 4th of July, and I'll also add on that we don't enforce parking during the 4th of July as well, when we're enclosed for city offices. Kiosks will be messaged to convey that.
Dan? Thank you. Thank you. Dan Crist, anything from the legal?
Very briefly, Your Honor, just as it relates to the fireworks and the discharge of fireworks.
Yeah.
It is permitted June 29th through July 4th, from 11:00 AM until 11:45 PM, and since Friday is the 5th, the 5th falls on a Friday or Saturday, it is permissive on the 5th, Friday, until 11:45 as well, so 11:00 AM to 11:45 on the 5th.
Okay.
Nothing further, Your Honor.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Martin?
I just want to wish everyone a happy and safe 4th of July.
That's right. Councilwoman Xmay?
So, a couple things, I just want to share that I had the pleasure, actually the honor and privilege of being invited as a guest speaker, along with the, invited by the Michigan Democrat, the National Democratic Black Caucus, hosted, it was a town hall hosted by Commissioner Nancy Quarles and Commissioner Janet Jackson, and what we talked about was the importance of the 19th Amendment and Juneteenth, and how it's, has, how it has impacted elections today. So, I just wanted to share that, one, I was just honored to be in their presence, they're dynamic women, and, two, I'm just really proud of where we've come, and how we all agree that we have a ways to go. But it was an honor to be there, and if you don't know about those two commemorative events, look it up, because it was a really impactful moments in history, so, all right. Topic number two, I just wanted to say thank you to the staff for bringing about the affordable housing study, and for following our lead as a council about something so important to us, I really appreciate your efforts and what you're doing, and I'm excited to see where we go with this, and I hope we're really vigilant in, in pursuing it, because I think it's an important goal. So, thank you for your time that you've been taking to do it, and I look forward to working with you.
Councilwoman Piana?
Yeah, just two things, I have been a champion of Save My City through the Michigan Municipal League, and I got these handy-dandy cards now, that talk about the solutions that are, the MML is advocating for for cities, and it's really about restoring Michigan's investment in our communities. I hear a lot about our taxes in Ferndale, and having a conversation about our taxes has to have be a conversation about the lack of revenue sharing that the city is committing, or the state is committing to cities, they are balancing their budget on the backs of cities, and not fulfilling their obligations, and the conflict between Headley and Prop A. So, the city keeps losing money every year via tax revenue because of this, and so, if anybody is interested about having the conversation, I would send you to savemycity.org, there's a lot of great information out there about why cities aren't doing as well as they could be, and learn about our, our cities, our state's revenue, revenue problem. And, I'm really excited, my term for the Board President of MML is coming to an end shortly, and I just wanted to sort of piggyback a little bit on what Raylon Leaks May had been talking about with Juneteenth, and I'm very honored that I will be passing the gavel to the first African-American woman to be the president of the league, and I just wanted to say, as someone who supports being a diverse and inclusive community, I'm proud that the state-level organization is taking that step. The board set some standards of excellence for diversity, equity, inclusion, and we've been able to fulfill that over the year, and clearly, the result of that intentionality is a new board president who's going to be the, who is the Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Saginaw, Brenda Moore. So, stay tuned for more stuff. Thanks.
Mayor Pro Tem, Polica?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
All right, and that leaves me, and all I just want to say is have a happy and safe and blessed July 4th weekend and holiday, and meeting adjourned.
Pray for no rain.